All right, good evening everyone. We'll do our call to order at 7:00 PM. Tonight is Monday, March 12th. It's the school board meeting. We have on our agenda tonight, the call to order, the approval of the agenda, the superintendent's report. We have several discussion items. The NEST will be doing a presentation. Westwood Nature Center will be doing a presentation. We will have second readings on Policy 101, Legal Status of the District, 108, District Goals, 413, Harassment and Violence, and 415, Reporting and Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. On our action agenda, we are set to do the approval of Policies 101, Legal Status of the District, 108, District Goals, 413, Harassment and Violence, and 415, Reporting and Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. And then we'll have communications and transmittals and adjournment. So, at this point, I will take a motion to approve this agenda. Moved by Mary, second?
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six... And Superintendent Osai.
All right. Well, good evening Chair Waters and members of the board. As a part of my superintendent's report this evening, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the National School Walkout Plan for Wednesday, March 14th at 10:00 AM to honor the 17 victims of the tragedy that occurred in Marjory Stonemans Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida last month. Similar to the students all across the country, students in St. Louis Park have been organizing and working with school and city officials to develop plans for the scheduled walkout on Wednesday. While it is not a school-sponsored event, I feel comfortable in saying that I have been impressed by our students throughout the planning process. As I think about our district mission, I see our students contributing to community in a very intentional way. I know there are scheduled activities connected to the National School Walkout, both at the middle and high school. While I'm unaware of any student-organized events planned at our elementary schools, I have been in communication with elementary principals to explore options for developmentally-appropriate activities for students who may choose to participate in the walkout. I would like to thank the mayor, the city of St. Louis Park, for all of their planning and preparation to help keep students safe that day. And also, I would like to thank specifically the St. Louis Park Police Department and Fire Department. Board members, I would also like to thank each of you for your engagement and support of our students throughout this process. Watching how our community has come together to support our students and keep them safe truly reinforces the notion that we are a children-first community. So Chair Waters and members of the board, this concludes my superintendent's report for the evening.
Thank you very much Superintendent Osai. Next on our agenda is a presentation from the student leaders of the NEST. Thank you for taking the podium and telling us your story.
So while I'm not a student leader right now, I'm going to introduce them. My name is Julia Schmelzer. I'll take the podium with the microphone. Thanks, Julia. Yeah. So my name is Julia Schmelzer. I am the chair of SLP NEST. Have been working with a lot of these students for several, well, some over two and a half years have graduated already, and then the rest of them for the past year and a half or two to find out, do they want this kind of a space? What do they want? And then they have pretty much created it from here. So my role is really to empower them to create the vision and then assemble some adults to help them make it happen. So I will just get started with a short video and then let them take it from there. Before I do that, though, I just will get started with just our mission statement. So apologize for the delay here. So, "Students in St. Louis Park need a safe, inclusive space where we can gather, express ourselves, and be part of our community." So this is their voice. Our mission as SLP NEST is to provide a welcoming, teen-centric space that nurtures individual expression, encourages a diverse community, and builds life skills. So however, to make this happen, we do need help. You guys have received our presentation ahead of time, as well as our draft business plan. It's still, like, we keep moving forward. It still keeps getting refined as we go and learn more. So you saw the glimpse in time of our business plan as of two weeks ago, and it continues to take shape as we move forward. So now I will just show a short video.
I want the NEST to be a place where students can come and get together to do homework or just relax and be themselves and express themselves freely.
I would probably use the NEST to either study, hang out with friends, or like, if I needed to like escape from all the school madness or like finals, then I'd probably just go there and chill.
The NEST really can be used as anything. Like, it's, I think the entire point of it is it's a multipurpose thing. We'll get to meet people that are different than you, and you'll be able to interact in kind of a common place.
I want the NEST, I just want a safe environment where we can actually feel comfortable coming to and not be judged or even be afraid to just come there, ask for help, or talk to anybody about problems that we have.
I think it would be really nice, instead of going to like the Depot in Hopkins or something, to have a place locally that we could make our own.
If it's going off like the Depot and it's like Dappa in St. Louis Park, I mean, I like the music at the Depot, so I feel like I would go there for music. So like, the bands are around in St. Louis Park. And food, I guess, just like since it'd be really close, it'd be like another place to eat that's not McDonald's.
There aren't that many places for high schoolers to come to just like study or to like have coffee in the morning or just hang out with their friends. Like, there's, outside of high school, there's like McDonald's, and there's like a tiny frozen yogurt store, and there's like nothing. There's like the highway.
If I need to meet up with a group of friends, if I need to get a bunch of work done, I'm one of those people who like wait till the end of the quarter of the semester to get my stuff done. So like, that's a good thing for me to do is just go over there, just work on my stuff like after school.
And such a nice area where people can meet together, do shows, just do like anything you want.
And do you think this would be like beneficial to the students of St. Louis Park?
Extremely beneficial. I think it's a good place to like learn about different cultures and like different environments, and it's just like, it just sounds like something that we would need, you know? And I wish I had had that during my time in St. Louis Park.
For the past year and a half or so, me and a lot of other students have been having meetings about what we wanted it to look like, what we wanted to be and not be. And we've been presenting to a lot of important members of the community about what we wanted to be, and we've received a lot of positive support about that.
So with that, that's kind of a summary of the vision that the early visionaries had that we've captured in that video. Now I would like to have JJ and Libby, and actually the rest of the student board members, if you guys could come this way. And then, really, from an agenda standpoint, I think we have probably 16 more minutes of your time. So JJ has a few words, and then we can open it for questions and answers, which is what we thought would be most effective. And then, as you can see, there's a lot of student support here for this idea. So JJ, Libby, Lucas, Cole, Owen, Marley.
Okay, I'm JJ. I'm new to the student board. So what the NEST is, it's basically a place for students, ran by students, but essentially will be overseen by adults. We're not your typical teen center, whereas you have adults assuming what we want. Rather, we're telling you what we want, and we're also providing, we're a nonprofit, providing a space for mental health support, as well as school support and school activities.
So you're ready for questions? So I really had the privilege of meeting with Libby and JJ last week to make sure they felt ready for this meeting and to make sure that we didn't have any surprises about questions. So, an important question would be, you have a business plan. Talk about how your fundraising is going and how you are designed to operate for sustainability.
Yeah, so, so our Kickstarter product, or Kickstarter overall money goal for this year, for the first year of operations is $97,000. You would see that in the, in the plan. So right now, we just, in the last week or so, we just got our GoFundMe up, and we, no, we just got our...
Oh, we got a Kickstarter.
It was a GoFundMe, yeah. So we just got our GoFundMe up. But even before that we've done this, we have already gotten $8,000 from the community in just individual donations. And we expect that to really, really escalate as we move on. And that's without even having a space. We, I mean, we're talking about having a space right now, and we're like on the verge of confirming with, is it 30, 6215? 6215 on Lake Street down here? It's next to the Autobody Shop, and we're, we're basically talking to them, and they basically have said that we're, you know, you guys are a priority for us, and we want to make you guys a priority in terms of who we want to rent this out to. So, once we have a space, our sustainability for funding will be, I think from the community especially, will be, I mean, it will be more than we could ever imagine. The community will step up, like they already have, but we don't even have a space now, so that will be part of it. But then obviously, that's not something that's 100% reliable, so we will be applying for grants. We have a lot of different grant options that we've been looking at, from St. Louis Park Foundation and different local businesses in the area. We've been in contact with lots of businesses that are willing to donate and that have done in the past similar endeavors such as ours. Yeah, and you can see from our, our plan as well that we do have a very quickly growing revenue from our Muddy Paws Cheesecake that we'll have in the NEST. So they'll be contributing 10% of all the revenue to the NEST. And in the first year, we have that, and actually Tammy came up with those numbers based on all of her endeavors, and she's been doing this for years and years and years, so she knows what she's doing. And she has stated that $50,000 is the approximate number that, and that's being conservative, that Muddy Paws will make, so, so like $5,000 for the NEST. And that will fluctuate, and that will grow up to about $150,000 in three years. So we're expecting it to triple within three years, and we still get, the NEST will get 10% of those, that revenue that they get. So, does that answer your question?
Jim?
Yes? Okay.
I think your efforts are fantastic. I'm surprised you've been able to do this much when you didn't have like one big, single block grant. I'm wondering, do you have a model for this business? Are you at all similar like to like the Depot in Hopkins or any other place like that?
Yeah, we're, we're modeling a lot off of the Hopkins Depot. That's one of our main businesses that we're getting advice from and counseling from. So that's mostly a business model. And we're getting a lot of help from Tammy with Muddy Paws, with the business side of things, so that we can focus more on providing an environment.
I have multiple things here for you. So I'll start by first saying that this is a great endeavor, I think. Many people in, well, anyway, I've talked to you about it, Lucas, where many years ago, I thought that this would be a great thing for St. Louis Park when Hopkins was creating this environment. But I had no power to get it done, so, and that was, what, 10 years ago? So, I really like that you guys are putting this together. I like that it's student-run and student-managed. I do have that concern about sustaining income. So you pretty much answered that. I'd like for you guys to think about that a little deeper, though, because grants are, they come and they go. I'm not familiar with how grants have been doing, but grants come and go, and that money is not really sustainable. So if you guys can figure out a model that would open it up to the community so that we are enjoying Muddy Paws more frequently, more hours also, that would be great. And then a coffee shop right around the corner, and just go get it. So, those are great things that are happening. And I also read through your, you guys didn't talk about this yet, but I'll let it know for the community. You guys had a meeting with the city, and some of the questions that came up with diversity and how you guys are working through that, and that's, that's great. Would anybody like to talk about how the environment would be diversified and not just single flow?
So we have student branding meetings every other week in the morning. We're promoting on Instagram, on Facebook, on Snapchat. It's open to students. We have had a lot more diversity come in. They unfortunately couldn't make it last night, but we are currently like promoting and encouraging people to come so we can hear all different perspectives from all different types of people.
So, I just want to echo what others have said. I, there's a lot of wonderful stuff that's happening in the world that's student-driven, and this is a great example right now. So thank you all very much for being here and for all of the time and hours and talent that you've put into this so far. One of my questions is, could you all talk a little bit more about why you need a separate space? We're doing a big renovation to this building. We would love student input on how to meet some of your needs here. There are these other businesses. Talk a little bit more, if you can, about why you need your own space that you are the only ones that occupy.
We feel that a lot of students here have a lot of anxiety and just stress being within these four walls. I don't think anyone would want to be here a lot longer than they had to be. It's also a lot of work to set up and clean up every day. If we have just one room for the NEST after school, we can't have, you know, the one corner for getting help on homework, one corner for snacks, and we can't have that because that's just going to cause like a lot of tension, and there's going to be too much going on in the room. Whereas when we have a separate space, we have more liberty to express our creativity. We have more space to help students and, yeah.
Also, we had a board meeting this Sunday, and we, just like something small to point out, is why would you stay at work longer than you had to be? Like, after work, would you still hang out at work? I don't know.
I used to work a lot, so I'm the wrong person to answer that.
And we're not, we're not implying that there's anything negative about the school. We do definitely recognize the value of everything you guys are doing here. It's just pretty apparent that students do need unstructured, non-school environments, and that's sort of a void for a lot of students, especially with low accessibility.
One more question, and if you can't get into details on this now, I understand, because I didn't, I don't think I got this to you yesterday, but you mentioned mental health support in the sentence, or when you introduced yourselves. Could you, what are the plans around mental health support specifically? And if you can't answer that now, I need to get back to us on that, I understand.
Okay, so like, again, being here in the school sometimes creates a lot of stress and anxiety for people, whereas you can be in a space where you can openly, openly express yourself without the fear of being judged or the fear of people looking at you. Oddly, we have a lot of IB students in our school board, and we're trying right now to get some more to provide homework help as well, because I know people have a lot of struggles with that, with some of the teachers. They just need like a different perspective on like math or science, someone else to explain the topic.
Okay, but no current plans for social worker onsite or counselor onsite or...
Yeah, so, so we've been talking to Youth Frontiers about hiring a general manager that's qualified to work with young people and is qualified to work with people with mental health and that have past experience with that. And that's why we are, our business plan does encompass a very large portion of the money we'll be spending in the first year towards our general manager, because we do want that person to be someone that students feel safe going to. So, I mean, that person, of course, and then we've been talking to the, the fire department and the police department as well about getting them involved in, in a safe but not in intrusive way in the NEST. But our main thing is getting the general manager that, yeah, and the county too, but yeah.
Ann?
Thank you guys for being here. This is thrilling. We don't always have this big of an audience. You guys did a great job of connecting your plan to our strategic plan, our mission, our core values, and I also loved the page that connected your plan to the children-first developmental assets, so awesome. So I was wondering about what opportunities will there be for educational opportunities, learning opportunities, connections? I know you're, you're saying it is away from school, so taking school to the NEST. Can you talk a little bit about some of those opportunities that you have planned?
I also like to connect that with Mary's question as well, because I, so we don't want, we don't want to make it seem like we're saying, okay, you know, we don't want the school at all. Like, we, we spend eight hours in the school every day, and that's just not something we want to, you know, be at continuously for like all night. But there is a beautiful thing about a lot of the curriculum that we have at school, and we want to involve a lot of the curriculum that we offer at school and expand on that. And we really think that the NEST can be that opportunity for expansion. It can be different, I mean, it varies so much. It can be something from like DECA working in the business plan, or helping out with the finances for the nonprofit, or being part of the board, or, or hiring a student as, a worker as the coffee shop or something like that, and getting them real, live experience on how to run a business. So, so we really think that we can connect and even create curriculum and work with the school a little bit on that. Yeah, I just want to make it clear that we're not saying like we don't want the school involved at all, like we want, you know, we want you guys' support and hopefully your help in, in the future to, to connect in a, in a inclusive but not, you know, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, we're hoping to be able to provide like studying space and time, and we're hoping to have like tutoring programs too. So we're definitely not like, we're not like trying to shut out the school. We're just providing another space for unstructured time, even if that includes school things.
And one thing I'd like to add is, as my time being on the board, I've done so many things that I know are going to help me in the future. I've written articles of incorporation and helped with the mission statement. I've presented to Hennepin County, and just all these things I didn't know I would like, honestly. I just joined the board, and I do like them, and it's fun to learn, and it's fun to feel empowered, and I'm more educated about how to talk to people or how to present, so that's just, I want to say that.
So can we hear a little bit more about the unstructured time? You talk about we're teen-centric, we are programming for ourselves, but we're having adult supervision. Can you tell us a little bit about what the space, because you talked a little bit, JJ, that here it's constrained by setting up, taking down, setting up, taking down. So what would the NEST environment, you know, just help me walk through it in my imagination and the people who are listening, what the space encompasses so that we, we have a better understanding of what would happen? How do you do unstructured time in a structured space?
Yeah, so, so I really feel like a lot of us have different visions of what the NEST is going to be. The goal is the same. The goal is to have a place where people can be themselves. But everyone's vision is different, and what everyone wants to call it is different. Teen-centric is in our mission statement or in our bylaws. And, you know, we're not a teen center, just because that, that kind of connotates like a weird, something that's been kind of created by society in this, in this place where, you know, students really think of that as a place run by adults, and we don't want to make it seem like that. So we are a teen-centric place, but also like when we create this space, it's going to be, you know, everyone else is, I mean, even then, once we have the space, everyone else is going to call it something different, you know, a coffee shop, the, the NEST, or whatever. The reason I feel like, like that's, like that's so important, like having a place to our, to ourselves is because, like, we, we go, we go, we go to school, we go home, we go to work, and we're, we're never in charge of ourselves. And that sounds like so depressing, and I mean, but, but it's seriously true, and we, we just don't have that time where we are able to make our own decisions in our own space with our own limits. Like, we always have that, you know, glass ceiling where we're able to operate in. So the NEST is really that place where we're able to, to step outside of that, you know, and, and we have, like, if we have a place that actually like provides that space, then we don't have to set it up and take it down. We don't have to go make plans with friends and, which is very hard, just like making plans to, to go and, and meet somewhere at a caribou and like have, have a meeting about some, some other thing that's going on. I don't know, but if we have the NEST, then that's somewhere that's just there. It's just there, and we don't have to, you know, create it or take it down after we're done with it.
Jim?
Well, I just have a comment. I kind of love this whole idea. I believe it could be a vital cog in supporting the mental health of youth. I think just, just by dint of being a gathering space, and I also like the idea of maybe youth figuring out ways to support each other. I mean, there's only so many youth, or so many adult concerts we can afford to hire. So I think this has fantastic potential, and I'd, I'd love to figure out a way to support it. I don't know, it may prove not possible to give you a cash contribution. It might be illegal for us to donate to a nonprofit. I don't know, we, we'd have to discuss it. But I'm hoping, hoping we'll find out some way we can support the development of this.
Can I say something? I wasn't going to talk, but now I want to. So, I feel like one thing we haven't touched on either, everything we have touched on is great, but one big thing I like to advocate for the NEST is the arts especially, which we haven't talked about. But aside from it being a center for mental health and just a place for students, it's also a place where we can have our own place to hone our art, not hone our art skills, but kind of have our own and take creative, creative action. So, one thing we do at the Depot, I, there's a lot of bands at the high school, as you may know, and we always go to the Depot, which is kind of a trek. And so, one thing we really want to do is have a stage there for poetry readings and singing, acoustic nights, band things. And, and there's so much talent in the school, and as much as I love the school, and it provides so many things like theater and choir and classes, like, I can't take any art classes, because I'm, I'm not forced, but I am forced to do a lot of academic stuff, which is great, it's very necessary, but there's not really, as an example, I come, I wake up at 6:00 in the morning, and I come here for zero hour choir, because I really love singing. And then I stay till 6:00 for theater, because I really like theater. But that, that's a very long day, you know? And so, sometimes it would be nice to have a place to do that kind of stuff without being organized by the school, you know? And be able to say, oh, this Saturday I want to have, just, I just want to go to the NEST and paint, you know, things like that. So I just want to make that was, that's a big part of our plan, is make arts like a central thing.
That was, that was something that came out as, as I've been talking to some of the students, that expression, a place where you can express yourself in multiple ways is, is very, very daring to us. And I think that would be a great forum for you guys to do that. I also like the, the word of the NEST in that, I was thinking about this this afternoon, in that it's kind of like, you guys are like the little birds of the nest and the parent of the nest, and you can always fly out and do your thing and then come back. You always have a safe place to go to. And that's kind of like the NEST is for you guys, I think is what you're saying. But I'd also, as a community member, would like to go to a coffee shop in my community. So hopefully it's open during the hours that I could make it there.
It is open.
What are the hours?
Yeah.
Opposed hours?
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna try to make our hours as flexible as possible, like, the more money we have, it's gonna probably be in development. Yeah, and I wanted to say, yeah, I definitely, I have friends who are like in bands and stuff, and from what I've heard, finding venues is actually pretty competitive, especially when you're high schoolers. And frankly, being in high school for a young artist is a time for you to hone your skill and figure out your art style, and it shouldn't be a time for competing with adults. So I think the NEST is definitely a really great platform for student art. And we're also hoping to like host like physical art too, like for selling. So that's, that aspect of that too.
So like a gallery?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Joe?
I was wondering if you have visibility to, and whether you have the answer here or later, visibility to the Depot's budget and how they run things, where they get money, how they've kept it sustainable, or if you could talk about it in a, at a high level
Just gonna step in for a few minutes and say a few things.
Just going to step in for a few minutes and say a few things. We, the depot's books, they've been a little bit tight with them. We do know that their model, like, like Cole said earlier, we've modeled a lot of our ask around the way that the depot has been set up with the city supporting it, the school board supporting it. The Three Rivers Park District has a little bit in there. The Railroad has a little bit in there. Park Nicolette was their umbrella, you know, nonprofit organization until they established their own in 2012. So, we don't know like the, the day-to-day operations of their, their books. We've put together what we think is working for us and then have, have been, you know, talking to Rob Smoland a little bit. And then we also like the idea of having the DECA students and maybe some people from the, the like finance, the personal management, financial management class. Some of those students also helping to shape that, that operating model a little bit more. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we, the city is contributing right now. We're still working on the agreement terms. But 25,000, provided we can match that for the first year as seed money. So, we do have the city supporting us already as part of our beginning financials. So, any other specific questions that you were asking about related to the depot?
No, I mean, I, I would like it to be as specific as it could be, but obviously you cannot get to that. But you've given me a good idea of where, how they've pieced it together.
And we tried to reflect that in our, in our P and L as well, so. And it will be, the idea will be that it's open to the public a little bit too, and I think Cole could speak to that a little bit more.
Oh, the coffee shop? Yeah, for sure. We are, we are going to be open to anyone who wants to come in and get coffee for sure, at least the coffee shop aspect of it. Especially just because like our demographic is, is high schoolers and it's much more validating to have like adults getting coffee there. But we, and then like we do need to be careful from a safety standpoint and that's why we definitely are going to have the adult manager and everything. But we are hoping to be really community open and not just be like, this is a teenager's space because that's really restrictive and not what we're about, so.
Did you mention when you're going to be open yet?
Yeah, we're hoping to open first day of school next year.
Any other questions from the board? Are there questions that we should have asked you about, that we didn't know we should ask you about? What are the, the final thoughts you want to leave us with as you talk to not only the school board, but the, the community at large about your vision?
Okay, so, when I met with Karen Waters a couple of days ago, I'm just going to say that. We talked about why not just use the depot, like why do we need to use the Nest? And so, I just want to address that really quick. For the Nest, it's supposed to be very accessible, so that's why we have it so close to the school. It's also close to the bus, like, you know what I'm trying to say. So, it's walking distance from the school and we're trying to have it open to them. And also, not everyone has a car to get to the depot. Not everyone has that privilege. And so, I think that, that's why it's great that the Nest is walking distance from the school and so close to the heart of St. Louis Park.
I want to make sure that the students have the last word, but there were a couple of things. We had a really successful meeting with the county and they brought about at least a dozen people from a variety of their social service and community oriented groups within the county. They, to a last one, they were incredibly enthusiastic and they are more than eager to set us up with funding and with mental health services and with all kinds of things. They can't wait to get in there, so much so that I think it's going to be Julia's job to make sure it doesn't turn into one of those mental health teen centers and nothing else. But the great thing about that is they are ready to jump in with a lot of services and help and put us in touch with grant opportunities. So, one of their development people will be, we're trying to get past this meeting and then they will be meeting with us regularly. So, I know we can't support everything on grants alone, but we think with local community ones, with the county's assistance and with some other bigger ones that are kind of dream pie in the sky, we can assemble some funds and we may have multiple years of different places we can tap. So, that was the county news that both addresses a little bit of the funding and a little bit of the mental health. And as soon as we're in a position of thinking that we actually have a space to provide such services, we will definitely be looking to pull in more students to help be the interface with the county assistance, so.
I also wanted to comment on how much student support we're getting for this too. We have organizations like DECA involved, which is really good for business and services. We have Storio involved. We are getting HAP involved, which is Students of High Achievement, Especially for Color. They're majorly involved in us. We have the Feminism Club involved in us too. We're also working towards student-based scholar, not scholars, fundraising because we feel that it's important for more student support too, to help us, help them.
And also, I can't even tell you how many times, how many people texted me today saying, oh, when's the Nest meeting? And they were, I was like seven and they're like, oh, I can't make it. So, like, there's a lot of students here, but there's a lot, there's been a lot of echo news coverage. Like, most cycles, there's been something about the Nest. People ask me all the time like, oh, what, what, like, when is this going to open? What are they going to do? Like, so it's very much something people want. And also, we've been talking, aside from those clubs that JJ mentioned, I'm starting to talk with SOAR, so Students Organization Against Racism. I've talked to them about, you know, holding like meetings and like sessions at the Nest to like teach people. Because a lot of times, people don't really know about that club very much. I mean, there, there's a little, a little amount of people, but I've been talking to a lot more clubs. So, there's a big student population that wants this.
I'd just like to say one more thing about how much student support we have. We also, from what I've been hearing, we also are getting a lot of teachers involved as well, like Mr. Utitas and kind of that area of teachers to help with, you know, whatever. Yeah, Mr. Polk is also helping us, so that's pretty great. He's who we host our meetings every Thursday morning. So, students, feel free to come to those because we could really use some more opinions.
And we do know that this is kind of a tight time to be initiating projects and stuff with the school board. But I just wanted to say that I think this is a really, really good way to hit a lot of the marks for your goals that you guys are going for. I think this is a really good project for the community. We're just a really flexible, broad coverage of a lot of different issues. And I think if you guys are going to be investing in anything, this is a really important, this is a really important venue, so. As it would like me to say, we're going to have a lot of sports and activities.
I, I heard there was a space for a basketball hoop?
Okay, so, also during the board meeting that we had, we talked about providing tickets to sport games that students can't afford. Because not everyone can afford, you know, seven dollars of tickets and they want to go with their friends, but we can't, or they can't, or whatever the issue is. So, yeah, we just want to provide other things that aren't just, are also sports.
Any other questions from my colleagues? All right, so we are really grateful that you all on the board came out to present, that you in support of this project came out. One of the things that I heard is that you really wanted to make sure that the community heard your voices. And we are so glad we could give you the space and time to do that. Keep asking throughout the community. I know you're doing Facebook postings. Talk to the Sun Sailor and the other media outlets. But people need to hear more about your story. And I think one of the little pieces we talked about was your 30-second elevator speech. All of you have had a little bit different twist to it and, and hone that so that when you are going into a pitch meeting with anybody in the community who might have some dollars in their checkbook, you want to make that sale within 30 seconds. And I know you all have the capacity to do that. So, thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. And good luck because this is really exciting and I love to see the work in action. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ann?
Could you tell us your names, everyone who's spoken, just so we know who you are?
I'm Lucas Reed.
I'm Cole Nitrane.
Owen Campbell.
JJ Harstein.
Libby Ramsperger.
Isaac Wall.
Joey Miller.
Marley Spears.
Thank you.
So, you are all welcome to stay for the entire meeting, exciting as school board meetings can be. But if you have homework to do, you are not hurting our feelings if you need to leave. So, thank you so much for coming. Next up, we are going to be hearing from Jason West from the City and Westwood Nature Center. All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate that Jason is here with his team. And if we could introduce your team, Jason, and we're looking forward to your update.
Good evening, Chair Waters and members of the school board. Thank you for having us today. My name is Jason West. I'm the Recreation Superintendent for the City of St. Louis Park. We're here today to talk about Westwood Hills Nature Center and building a new interpretive center. And who I have here with me today is Brian Hoffman, the Director of Inspections and Facilities. Greg Feinberg in the audience here. He's one of our naturalists at the Nature Center. And also Glenn Wagasbeck with HGA, our architect firm. I was just going to go really briefly on a timeline and then we'll get to the presentation as well. We didn't just start thinking about creating a new nature center overnight. We were actually in the talks about 2013, 2013. And then we went through a master plan process in 2015 and 2016. Schematic design ended up in 2017 and now we're in the design development phase. So, we're still looking for input and feedback from residents and yourselves as well. And with that, then I'll hand it over to Brian.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening. As Jason indicated, the process started in 2013 and probably just like the, the district here, the city goes through a systematic process of evaluating our buildings, our various city facilities. And we had been dealing with things that really needed some attention. And actually, before 2013, we started to realize, okay, so that the city can have a good long-term financial sustainable plan, what do we need to do with the nature center? And so, we, we knew we'd be doing something and we started evaluating the building, which was built pretty minimally back when it was constructed. And we knew it had some inherent problems and we looked closer and realized, you start getting into really trying to fix the building and you've got a pretty major project on your hands. And then the realization also came that the building was very oversubscribed. I got to experience that one day when I was up there. I think there were seven or 80 children up there for, for an event one day. And it was cold outside and they were all in this one room. And our staff is in a very small office area, multiple desks in what normally would be probably a single office. And the hallway serves also as their food prep and the bird care and animal care area. And so, it's, it's a very overly used building, which is a fantastic thing. So, the more we looked at it, we realized, you know what, to keep operational remodeling, it's probably a lot of money in. Not much, how much value we'd get. So, we, we started plugging in money for a long-term master plan. We did that. We hired a, a design firm and evaluated the building more closely, confirming the idea that it probably wasn't a lot of a building there to, to really invest in. And went out into the community back then with the, the master planning and said, what do people look for? What do they need? Talking to children, their parents, the people that work there. And realized that it was probably time for a nature center that really was more suitably constructed, sized and offered the programming that people wanted for and the convenience. So, we plugged in, after the master plan, we calculated about $12 million based on the size of the building. That was plugged into our long-term financial plan. And so, the money has been in the, in the city's budget. A big chunk of that is expected in 2019 to be bonded. The city would sell bonds to help finance that. And that's what we're looking for as a construction start, so a little over a year from now. Hired HGA, went through a study and came up with selecting them as just a wonderful design firm. They do engineering and architecture all in-house and based in Minneapolis. And so, right now, we've got Glenn, who's going to take us through the little bit more exciting part, showing us some slides of how the building is progressing.
I'll try to make it as exciting as possible. My name's Glenn Wagasbeck. I'm an architect with HGA. I represent the design team of architects, engineers, landscape architects and interior designers that are required to design a building like this. So, I'll give you a bit of an overview of the project. Projects start with goals, vision and goals. This particular nature center, and Brian and Jason have both spoken to some of these things, have goals that are in three basic categories. One is operational goals, optimizing nature center operations for programming purposes. Secondly is visitor experience. How schoolchildren and the general public can be connected to nature in as many ways as possible through programming and through experience of the space. And then finally, energy use and sustainability, which I'll talk, talk through some slides about. Starting in 2016 with the master plan effort, it was determined that there were few issues with the building. Structurally speaking, I'm sorry, structurally and from a building system standpoint, the building's showing its age. It's sort of at the end of its service life, so to speak. From a programmatic standpoint, if you've been to the, been to the nature center, you'll know it's essentially a one-room schoolhouse. Brian mentioned, you know, being there on a rainy day with 70 or 80 kids in there. But from a more day-to-day standpoint, its size affects how programming can occur there. So, for instance, if there's a puppet show going on in the main space of the, of the building, which also contains all the exhibits, it's really hard and a little bit uncomfortable for the general public to come in there and actually get anything out of the nature center. So, there's a disconnect or a conflict between the public programming and then the educational programming. And so, right now, it's basically a one-room schoolhouse. And then, so separating exhibit space from classroom space became a real primary goal. This slide shows the kind of existing lay of the land, so to speak. On the left-hand side of the slide, you see at the top, there's a, maybe I can use this cursor. That's the existing nature center. If you're familiar with it, you know it's up the hill and in the woods. And there are some issues with, with that distance from the current parking. There's a safety issue and an accessibility issue. parking. There's a safety issue and an accessibility issue. It's hard for people who have any ambulatory problems to get to the nature center very easily. In fact, at the last few public meetings we've had, you know, staff has to kind of cart people up and down the hill. So, that describes some of the issues with the building, and those are problems that need to be solved in order to meet operational goals. Site and building design concepts. The project, and in fact, the RFP that HGA responded to, described the desire for a building and site design that would become a teaching tool for the general public. Here's the existing site and building, if you're familiar with the site. Here's the existing nature center. There's a clearing with a small parking area at the end of this sort of gateway road that you arrive alongside a prairie environment. And so, here in a nutshell is the proposed project. Whoops. Flipping ahead. The big picture, the idea is to replace the nature center with a new facility that's located in a different part of the site, closer to the parking, and then replacing that existing structure with an outdoor classroom space, a green space that, if you're familiar with the nature center, is right adjacent to the ponds, which are an interpretive landscape that naturalists use to take schoolchildren through and explain about water processes, geology, plant life, fish, et cetera. It's a wonderful place. The site plan that we've developed, again, puts the building at the top, or at the very north end of the current parking area, if you're familiar with it. And we do that for a few reasons. One is to get the building closer to parking, so it's more accessible, a little more user-friendly and safer. Also, we want to try to take advantage of the existing site resources in terms of solar exposure and wind exposure, and we'd like to touch the site as lightly as we can in terms of demolition of trees and regrading of land. We want to touch the land as lightly as we can. So, you can see the building lays out in an east-west orientation, and that's really to maximize the capture of sun and exposure to winds when we want to take advantage of it. From a landscape standpoint, we've located the building really on the transition between a prairie landscape and a wooded landscape. One thing that's really interesting about the Westwood Hills Nature Center is the fact that there are several landscape types that are represented on that site. Everything from pine forest to, of course, the lake and the marsh, but also this prairie that's been installed there, and then the woods, a couple of different types of wooded environments. This is a reclaimed golf course site, if you're familiar with the history of this area, which is another interesting overlay over the whole project. But what it is, is in fact, the whole thing is really a garden, whereas over the years, the City of St. Louis Park has really used natural forces to shape this area into the nature center that's there today. Here's the current floor plan of the building, and I'll walk you through it really quickly. At the heart of the building is really the instructional space. That's shown in dark green here. You see an A, B, and C classroom. You can imagine that's, those are the spaces that are currently like the space with the puppet theater that are used in the existing building, but expanded to better serve the programming needs and with a better complement of support spaces, including program storage, storage for furniture and supplies. There's a catering storage space, so that these rooms can be as flexible as possible. The majority of the time, they'll be used for schoolchildren and those types of educational programs, but there's also an opportunity to use the facility for rentals for, it could be a wedding, it could be used for a meeting, it could be used for a lot of different things. So, flexibility is the key. To the right of the plan, in yellow, are the main public gathering spaces of the building. So, this is where the exhibits in the building will be found, and I'll show you a couple of slides about the exhibits. One thing that this proposed design provides that the existing building doesn't is a place for people to stay, to actually go visit the facility, learn a little something about the landscape and nature, and then actually hang out in that facility, perhaps to birdwatch or just enjoy the environment. And that's separated from the classrooms, so that there's acoustic separation, there's physical separation. So, all of these activities can happen simultaneously and as efficiently as possible. The main entry, vestibule, actually includes a toilet room, so that after hours, the building is generally locked down at, you know, 5:00 p.m. or so. But people may be on-site after hours, and so, it provides a convenient, convenience of a drinking fountain and a restroom for people who are hiking after hours. And then, on the left-hand side of the plane, you'll see what's labeled a group entry. This is where we would imagine, you know, busloads of kids could come in without disrupting the public exhibit and gathering space. They could come into the hall, maybe calm down a little bit before they move into one of the instructional spaces. And then finally, I should point out, there's a raptor care area. If you're familiar with the current nature center, there are a couple of raptors there. There's a red-tailed hawk, and there's a barred owl. So, those would live in this facility, too. And then, there's the ability to expand by two additional animals that we're showing today. And the idea is that we would put these cages as far away in the building from the main public entry to kind of help de-stress the animals. And here's how that starts to shape up. This is a bird's eye view. You can see the building lays out east to west. And then, along the south orientation, in the middle between the classroom area and the exhibit space, the roof kicks back up to accept the winter sun. And here are a few cross-sections through the classroom area of the building that explain some of the sustainable and energy strategies inherent in the building. As I mentioned, the roof on the south, the south is to the right in these diagrams, the roof kicks back up to allow sun in in the winter, but there's an overhang that shades the summer sun. In the winter months, there's a thermally massive wall made of concrete or some sort of decorative tile or brick, we're still kind of working on that, that would absorb the heat of the sun. And then, once the sun goes down, it releases the heat and helps with the thermal comfort in the building. So, we would make a feature out of that as part of the building as a teaching tool. So, the shape and form of the building is meant to help express the natural forces that are going on, that we're taking advantage of on the site.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to get it in here, but are you, are we going for a certain, like, LEED certification with this building?
We are, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I'll mention it now since you asked the question.
Sorry.
We are pursuing what's called a zero-energy certification, and I'll talk about what that means in a moment. So, I'll flip to these slides quickly. The idea here is that we really, and in fact, in order to achieve a zero-energy building, you have to really tighten up the thermal envelope of the building in order to make it as efficient as possible. So, you can see, we've got really efficient windows. We've got a lot of insulation in the roof. We're taking advantage of what's called daylight harvesting, using photo sensors and lighting control systems to maximize the use of daylighting and minimize the use of artificial lighting. So, you can sort of mix them both together in order to achieve proper illumination in spaces and use as little as energy as possible. And then, finally, this cross-section shows that the roof on the left-hand side, the north side, is tilted up to face towards the south in order to accommodate photovoltaic cells for energy production on-site. So, we want to make those as efficient as possible, so we raise them up to face the sun. And I'll talk about our goals in just a moment. Here's what the building starts to look like. And this is really a snapshot in time. We're still developing the look and feel of things along with Jason and Brian and some other staff members. It's the raptor cages on the west. Some exterior spaces in and around the building that could be used for instruction. You know, kids could hang out here with a naturalist to talk about what they see, or they could be used more informally. This is one of those multipurpose classroom spaces. All these spaces have a really strong visual connection to the landscape. This slide shows that thermal wall. So, this is along that southern hallway in the building. So, the sun comes through the windows, hits this wall, the wall absorbs that heat. And this is in the winter months when the sun is really low, not in the summer when it's up high. It's in shade in that moment. But this wall can heat up in the winter and then help warm that space when the sun goes down. So, energy goals. To your question, we're attempting, or actually, we're well on our way towards achieving a zero-energy certification through the design of the building. And in a nutshell, what that means, it doesn't mean that the building doesn't use energy, but what it means that all the energy that the building uses has to be offset by an equal amount of onsite energy generation. So, in our case, that's photovoltaic cells. And in order to get to zero energy, you kind of have to pull out all the stops. There aren't a lot of zero-energy buildings in the state of Minnesota. In fact, our hope is that this will be the first certified one. There's some that are considered emerging. Zero energy is sort of a process. You build an efficient building with efficient mechanical systems, efficient thermal envelope, and then you have to operate the building efficiently, too. So, you have, so there's a, it's a process of sort of living in one of these buildings. And so, what this chart shows you is how we get to zero energy. So, on the left-hand side, this number 65 here indicates what's called the energy use intensity, the amount of energy that's used by a building per square foot per year. So, how intensely does a building use energy over the course of a year? This represents an EUI of 65, which is minimum Minnesota energy code. Sure, you could offset that with photovoltaics, but it would have to be a lot bigger than the size of the building that we have in order to, say, put them on the roof. And so, in order to really achieve a zero-energy building, we have to ratchet down the energy use in the building, which is represented by the second bar here. You can see a 47% reduction in energy use from code is what we're proposing. And so, you can see also in that bar, the component pieces, these different colors. Heating is the biggest offender, so to speak, for energy use, followed by interior lighting, and then fans and cooling and whatnot. But we can, through the design of the building and mechanical systems, ratchet that down to be almost half of what a code minimum building is. And then, we offset that with photovoltaics. And that's the last bar here, the green bar that shows a 37. 37 is what we think the maximum would be on the roof that we could achieve. And so, we need somewhere below that in order to be zero-energy. So, what we're showing is that we're, we, at least at this stage in the design, we are clearly meeting our goal. Another important aspect of the nature center, and this is something that if you've followed the U.S. Bank Stadium Development, is a big controversy, is bird-safe glass. We'll be building a building with a fair amount of glass for visibility in it, into and out of the landscape, and it's in their environment, in the bird's habitat, basically. And so, we know that we have to do, use some strategies to make this building safe for birds. And so, we're proposing using what's called bird-safe glass, which is a coating on the glass that reflects light at UV wavelengths. You can see it if you kind of look at it at an oblique angle, but basically, what we see, because our eyes only see certain wavelengths of light, is we see clear glass, but birds see a net of line work, and so, they don't want to fly through that. They think it's essentially solid. So, that's one of the strategies we're using to make this building as environmentally friendly as possible. And then finally, I wanted to talk about exhibit design concepts. We are, there's a consultant to the project called Split Rock Studios. They're out of Arden Hills, and they're a designer and fabricator of exhibits. You may have seen their work at the Mill City Museum in downtown Minneapolis. They've been enlisted, and we've been coordinating with them as the architecture team, to design some exhibits for the exhibit space in the building. And this is a, this is a really early concept that I'll share with you. This is all going to change in some way, shape, or form, but it'll give you a sense for where the exhibits are headed. So, these exhibits will be used for the general public. They're in the main public exhibit portion of the building, but kids, of course, you know, classes of kids will be taken through this as part of their programming as well. You can see that there are several stations. Here's a pollinator station, a discovery table for preschoolers, what's called the woodland snag, wetland pothole, prairie mound. It's a series of stations that explain and interpret different aspects of the nature center landscape or flora and fauna, and they're all connected by raccoon prints on the floor. This wall is what's called the terrarium wall. We'll have the existing terrariums in the nature center, reptiles, and I guess there's a flying squirrel and some other animals that will be relocated to this facility. And this sketch shows what that might look like. Here's another example of potential concept for a landscape exploration station, where a kid can pop up through the gopher hole. Pollinators are a big part of the programming at the nature center now. There's an apiary where they extract honey and teach kids about bees and pollinators. So, there'll be a station dedicated to pollinators. And that's it. This is an image showing the exterior terrace. Thanks.
So, with that, do you have any questions for us all?
It's not really a question, but just a comment that someone else had made. It seems like it's a good size to support our schools, and that if we have three or four classrooms at a certain grade from an elementary, you have those classrooms, whether they're split three or four, just open, it'd be a good size to support that.
During our, one of our joint staff, our joint meetings with the city, we talked about this, I think it was two years ago, maybe, and we expressed the interest in having our environmental scientists also be a part of the development of this project, so that our high schools could also use, and not only just the elementaries and part of the junior high, but also the high school, use it. How that, and then also, we were talking about the elementaries using it for the week-long or the couple-of-day-long environmental camp. So, have you guys talked through that or have been interested?
Maybe we'll help a little bit talk about programming as well.
So, currently, we do work mostly with elementary students, and I think the barrier is more just the way that the middle school and the high school schedule is, where they have hour periods. So, it's difficult for a school, a group to come out for a field trip. But we would be more than open to having high school students and junior high students come out. We just, we have not gotten a lot of interest, I guess, from the middle school and the high school. And I don't know if that's just a matter of the relationship hasn't been built, or if it really is more of a scheduling thing, but we would be open to that. You mentioned the, are you talking about like the trip to Eagle Bluff? Yeah. That's not being built into this, so we wouldn't be an overnight facility. It would just be day use.
I think they've eliminated the overnight, and now it's just a day use, three days in a row, where they would do the environmental type education.
Oh, so, I mean, we could definitely, so with a building like this, we could accommodate, like, having a whole grade come out from one of the schools and spend a day, or spend two or three days in a row. Just having the multiple classrooms gives us so much more flexibility with being able to accommodate larger groups and groups for a longer period of time.
What were the capacity of those rooms? What were you guys thinking about, Jason?
Two of the rooms we're looking at would be about 50, seat about 50 occupants, and then a third room would be about 25 to 30. So, if you open up all the walls, the dividing walls, it'd be roughly about 130 participants.
One thing I think we need to make sure we're including, it's not that middle school and high school students are not part of the Nature Center, they are, it's just in a different way, because we have an enormous number of students who serve you, and if you would just talk a little bit about that, please, Greg.
Yeah, so when I walked in here, and I think about at least half of the adults that were here for the nest had kids who were or are in our junior naturalist program. So, we have up to about 60, well, middle school and high school volunteers that help us primarily in the summer, but we even have some kids that help out throughout the year. So, yeah, they're not coming out on field trips currently, but they are involved.
So, I just want to jump in a little bit on that, too. So, when we talk about teen programming with St. Louis Park, this is huge, 60 to 65 youth that are teens that come to volunteer at the Nature Centers. I just think that's remarkable.
And like, I know one of our grads, Alex, who, he's a professional bird guide now, and he had his grad party at the Nature Center because he spent so much time there. So, that's the relationship piece that the facility connected, at least in this one kid that I know very well, from kindergarten field trip through his graduation of high school, his college work, and beyond. So, that's one kid I know of, but I know there's got to be more who follow environmental science based on the learning. I mean, heck, I've been on the field trip where we're dipping for water samples and whatnot.
So, this weekend, we actually took some out-of-town guests, and we came, and we had kids ranging in age from under 2 to 14 who were there, and we were in the building and looking around. They all named all the animals in the terrarium and went up hiking on the hill and looked at the scat and the tracks, and everybody had a great time. But then we were coming back down onto the wildflower trail shortly before the, or in between the apiary and the playground. We spotted five deer who were grazing out in that field, and it was just awesome. We just stood there for the longest time, watching them eat, looking at us, looking back at them, and it just made me think while you were doing, while you were showing the drawings, what are the concerns about displacement of any animal habitats when all this construction is happening, and the equipment, and the noises, and all of that? I could have asked this the other night, but I didn't think about it. So, could you answer that?
Yeah, I can talk to that. As I mentioned, we're trying to disturb as little of the site as possible, but we're also building a, you know, roughly 13,000-square-foot building. So, there will be some disturbing of habitat, but we're trying to limit the amount of trees that we're taking down. That's one of the reasons why we're locating the building where it is, just north of the parking area. Another thing that we're trying to do is limit the footprint of grading that is moving the earth around in order to accommodate the building and new stormwater management that's going to be required for, to offset the building and new parking. So, we're really working on trying to ratchet down the size of the footprint of the overall project. We also have to keep the existing Nature Center up and running during the construction project, too. So, that's yet another force that's, you know, making us want to just touch the site as lightly as possible.
So, you talked about some of the opportunities to grow sort of elementary, middle school, high school educational opportunities in the new facility, and I'm wondering, would there be opportunities to partner with Community Ed, say, for our birth-to-kay and then our lifelong learners to kind of advance our whole range of educational outcomes?
Actually, we've been in communication with Community Ed as well, and we're excited about that. We are very excited, and we talked about watercolor paintings, you know, different things like that, too, that we could do at the Nature Center with more efficient space that this would be.
Yeah, in that regard, I remember visiting another Nature Center and talking over with them, their program, and they'd have several groups that would come in, either go out hiking first and then have like a kind of a breakfast, or vice versa, breakfast first and then go out, and it seems like with this more, bigger common space, it would support that kind of thing.
Can you, I didn't notice any kind of a coffee shop or anything in there. Were you thinking about doing, well, you know, you get, I've been to several Nature Centers, and sometimes, you know, you kids are still roaming around, and you're ready to go, and it's like, well, I'll sit down and have a cup of coffee.
So, thank you, Ken. We gave a presentation, a very similar presentation to the senior men's group, and the number-one thing that they want is their coffee. So, we know that there will be coffee, and we're not sure if it's going to be out of a vending type of service or what that looks like, but we do know there will be coffee and will not compete with the nest, either, just to say.
Is there anything else that you'd like us to know that we didn't even think to ask you, Jason?
Oh, just trying to keep the whole community involved. Now is a time during this process where if there is any input, it'd be great as far as programming needs or opportunities that may be seen by you or staff here in the school district. This is coming up, this is a design right now that needs to go back to council in April for final approval, and we're operating under, currently, the $12 million budget and trying to deliver all this with a net-zero building. So, this is sort of the time, as if there is any good input or questions, that we sort of try to work through these things. Once, if and when council approves this project, and if it's tweaked or a little bit here and there, the idea is that we would have construction drawings crafted over the summer and go out and start the bidding process in the fall. Hopefully, it's a good time to look at the 2019 construction, so.
Obviously, we do want to collaborate with the school district. That's priority number one, and we want to foster that relationship even more, more than just going K through second grade and a couple of third grades, too. We want to see middle schoolers, high schoolers, we want them in there as well. I will leave you with just a little takeaway from our presentation tonight, too. Basically, we're here to ask for your support. This is what we're looking for. I don't know if that comes as a motion or as a letter of support, but we're looking for your support.
Thank you very much for all the time you've taken with us. We really appreciate the update, and when I was on CAC, I heard the updates along the timeline. So, this is not a surprise in our community. There's always been a well-thought, strategic plan that every city building would be attended to. I mean, frankly, the city's been more proactive at it than the school district, and we just, you know, when we did our strategic plan, had the realization, oh, we have to go after it all in one big go because we've not focused on it over a strategic pathway like the city has with the fire stations, the operations center, city hall, et cetera. So, I commend you for being really organized and thoughtful. This is one piece of a long timeline that benefits all of our residents, you know, and that's what I appreciate about the partnership, is that we do look to serve each other. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is policy development, second readings, policies 101, legal status of the district, 108, district goals, 413, harassment and violence, and 415, reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. There were some tweaks made in the policy documents, and if there are any other discussion items, let's take a look at them one at a time, starting with 101, legal status of the district. Does anyone have anything that we should attend to? All right, moving on to 108, district goals. Does anyone have anything we want to attend to? What I will say about that long-term, I think it'd be nice to look at that over the summer after we have our strategic plan update, because the language is a little loose and it is not tied to our current strategic plan. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Were there any additional changes? Mary?
Yeah, I would, am hoping, Cindy, that we can just add quotation marks around gender identi, oh, Cindy's not here. I'm talking to no one, sorry.
You should look up before it's first meeting. I don't get this to Cindy, but any quotation marks around gender identity?
You're talking about in number seven in the definitions?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Just to match. It's just a punctuation.
Yeah, just to make parallel, make it parallel to the other terms.
So, you marked up a copy that we can get to Cindy? Perfect, thank you.
So, weren't there a couple actions coming out of the last meeting with respect to running this by council or something, or? I thought Nancy had requested something of Cindy.
I know the specific discussion was related to the word "including," and if there was a legal requirement to have that word or not, and it was researched and it can be removed, is my understanding. Does that follow what you were recalling, Joe?
Oh, I was asking if that follow-up was done, and if you're saying it was, then good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, the, yeah, including has a strike, should have a strike through it.
There is one missing in A, right at the top, 2A. There should be a strike-through of including on the fourth line. Is that what you're saying?
So, Mary, were you able to catch that, and we'll get that to Cindy?
Yeah, I'll add that to the email for Cindy.
Perfect, thanks for catching that, Ann. Thank you for adding that. Mary and Jim, thank you, and Joe, thank you.
So...
Do we want to confirm the why we were doing that, or are we all squared away?
Mary, you had a specific reason why we did not need the word. Are you able to address that?
I can articulate it as well. We both had the same, I think, idea, which is that the way it read said, "race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation, including gender identity and expression or disability as protected classes." And we were discussing that gender identity and expression are separate from not the same, not a part of sexual orientation, so that it was just a definitional issue, that they just needed to be separated out. It wasn't precise that way.
And the language, as it was originally written, matched the Minnesota Human Rights Law, and that in commentary at this point has been widely acknowledged to be misleading, and so we're just tracking common, you know, most recent information.
So, the change, so just to be 100% sure here, so the changes from what's printed here are that we're getting rid of the "including" from 2A, and we're putting "gender identity and expression" in quotation marks in D7. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion about policy 413? Right, then moving along to policy 415, reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Any further comments on that policy? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to our action agenda. The approval of policies 101, legal status of the district, 108, district goals, 413, harassment and violence, including the additional points that have already been discussed, and 415, reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policies 101, 108, 413, and 415 as presented with the corrections in 413 as noted. Is there a motion? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Second by Jim Benneke. Any further discussion on these policies? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 6-0. Moving on to communications and transmittals, we do have one item. The next school board listening session is taking place on Saturday, March 17, at the St. Louis Park Middle School, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. in the media center rooms 1 and 2. Ann Casey and Jim Benneke will be present, as always. Please arrive within the first 30 minutes, or if there is no one attending, they will go home and do other things that they want to do on Saturday. Anyone else for communications and transmittals?
Thinking about the other things that are coming up. Okay, the Children's First Breakfast went off last week very well, two weeks ago, I guess that was, and the fundraiser was great, well-attended, don't think we had an empty seat. Van was excellent. If you have a chance, if it's posted out on Children's First, anywhere, go and find it. I was going to try to look for it this afternoon, but I got too busy. But go and try to find that, and it was great.
Any other items? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to leave.
All right. And second by Joe Tcholich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries 6-0. We are adjourned at 8:30, 8:28. Thank you.